All right, good morning to everybody. Today is October the twenty seventh, Monday at nine a.m. Gonzales County Commissioners Court will now be in session. I need to see if we got some public comment. Hang on just a second. I don't have that deal. Thank you. All right, we do have one on here for public comment and then one also for agenda item number twenty-one. Mr. Warier.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's all yours.
All right. Thank you very much, commissioners, for allowing me to speak. I am Ted Warier. I am from north of the Welder area. And I was going to speak in particular on agenda item twenty-one. Wasn't quite sure if you wanted me to make my comments on the front end or wait until that item comes up and then I could address it again.
You can do both.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, I've been very active along with a number of other folks in Gonzales County on groundwater issues. And there has been a very difficult contest case with the GBRA permit application to the groundwater district seeking an additional nine thousand acre feet a year. That permitted application started after May twenty-two, and it went through a huge contest case hearing. And we had an incredible turnout. Local folks really showed up. Great support by the judge and commissioners and the mayor on saying enough, you know, that they've we've they've already permitted away enough water. At this stage, you've got ninety-two thousand acre feet a year already permitted from the Grizo Wilcox Aquifer. That is a tremendous amount of water and an unsustainable amount of water if it were to be pumped. And so we are looking at a groundwater study that was done by the by the district. And this was issued in January twenty twenty-five. And I can provide copies, of course. And it shows there are a number of these monitoring wells, there's ten monitoring wells in the district, that according to the computer simulation, the computer modeling, a number of those monitoring wells are going to be below what they call the DFC. That's defined term in the water code that the desired future condition. And so it shows that the pumping levels are so high that it's going to cause stress in the area. And in particular, in some of these areas where there is a massive amount of pumping. And here's a board. And you can see, these this is Gonzales County, and this shaded area is the Gonzales County Underground Water Conservation District Boundary. But the GBRA project is right up here in this neck of the woods, these green dots that you see right there. And when you add it all up, when you look at what's going on in this corner of the groundwater district, what you see is that you've got Alliance Regional Water Authority at sixteen thousand acre feet. Can and then you've got GBRA, they already have fifteen thousand acre feet. They're looking for another nine thousand. That would make them the largest permit holder in the groundwater district. And then you've got Aqua at five thousand acre feet. But when you add that up, you get thirty-six thousand acre feet in a very concentrated area, which is why when they do the computer simulations, you see these monitoring wells. They're showing that the levels are really dropping off. And so the groundwater district board denied. It was on June tenth. It was a packed house. And great support. Everybody showed up. Public is opposed to this to this permit application. And so it was denied by the board. They issued the final decision on July thirtieth, which is a document, I think it was about forty pages, so which concludes all the findings and facts and conclusions. And so now GBRA, since they've been denied, they have now filed suit. They sued, they filed a lawsuit in Colwell County, I guess apparently to get away from Gonzales County, which would be the appropriate venue, I believe. But now we are looking for for support by the county. We'll also be asking the city to get behind the groundwater district board's decision by filing as an intervenor. And that would that would allow the county to be able to directly participate in the process, file concerns, and get those as 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 part of all the record, the court record, on on the issues that are very concerning to Gonzales County and making sure that all of those concerns are filed and in the record, along with the Water Protection Association. And I will be filing as an intervenor in order to get my concerns raised. I'm impacted big time by all this pumping. So didn't mean to take up too much time, but that's what this this item is about on twenty-one from, I guess, the concern citizen perspective. So there's a ton of information that's available to, you know, I can do a presentation, provide some additional input. But see, there are numerous cities across Texas that are in distress on water. I mean, they are really, I mean, they're looking to truck it in water. And there's no reason for us to go down that path. So just looking for strong support behind the legal effort to stop GBRA from this continuing attack that they have. What I had also, in addition to a big law firm, Baker staff that they had engaged on this, they've also now also hired another law firm, Baker Box, another big law firm. So they're spending a fortune on this legal fight. So it's very important that we do do whatever we can. All right. Looking for questions?
Thank you, Doc.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you for your presentation and all the work you have done in in this. We really can't comment back and forth on public comment, but all right. All right, we will move into consent agenda. The following items may be acted acted upon in one motion. The commissioner, county judge, or citizen may request an item to be pulled for separate discussion and/or action. Has everybody had a chance to look over the consent agenda? Any questions, concerns?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
So motion in the second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Move him to deliberate and consider action on the following items. Number fourteen, update from the new Jimmy Harness regarding drought conditions in Bern Ban Sanus. And there he is. You rolled some Harrisons last time.
The number five today is six thirty-eight, and they do expect the cold front will appear tomorrow late about thirty mile per hour.
I don't think we've had enough to even mess with the Bernie right now.
Several other counties have.
Y'all good? Thank you. Number fifteen, approve proclamation regarding October the twenty-fifth as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Do we have anybody here on that? Very good. Proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month for twenty twenty-five, whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. And whereas the problem of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and social barriers and are supported by societal differences. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community, thriving hearts Crisis Center, formerly Guadalupe Valley Family Violence Shelter, answered one thousand one hundred and eighty-two crisis calls and provided six thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven services to survivors from September the twenty-fourth to August the twenty-fifth. And whereas women are not the only targets, men, young children, and elderly are also victims. And sadly, economical, emotional scars are often permanent, and the domestic violence costs the United States companies at least three point five billion in lost work time, increases healthcare costs, higher turnover, and lower productivity. And whereas it is battered women themselves who have been in the forefront of the efforts to bring peace and equality to the home.
I move we approve the proclamation recognizing October twenty twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Second, did I, I was right. All right, had a motion in the second to proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month for twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-five as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and call all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent domestic violence and thereby strengthening the community in which we live. Would you like to get a picture with us? We wait till we get him in there. All right. If we can have that have that back, we're going to get her to sign it, and then we'll make a copy of it. And then she will give you that original, for sure. All right, we move to number sixteen, discuss with action the approval of an exception to Gonzales County Subdivision Rules, Precinct Three for Towson Circle T Ranch.
This is where there's a solar company that's going to have a battery farm beside an LCRAS substation in order to put them together. They need to acquire two point nine acres that is then going to be given to LCRAS to increase the size of their substation from ten acres to about thirteen acres. It'll be about two point nine acres leaving the ranch and being connected to the LCRAS substation.
So that's going to be a solar farm there?
No, but a lot of these, with the solar farms showing up in the county, a lot of these LCRAS substations or any substations are getting these big battery farms right beside them. I don't know the exact purpose of that.
It's just it's to hold it, it's to store and hold the energy that is generated during the daytime instead of it being wasted.
Putting it back on the grid at peak time.
So y'all put these solar on the sand before?
We didn't we didn't put any solar.
Nothing either.
No, we had several solar companies that came to us wanting abatements and wanting us to do a tax abatement, like a tax abatement and give them, I'm trying to think of the name of it. Were you?
Reinvestment zone.
A reinvestment zone. And we didn't actually, we did a reinvestment zone for them. And then there was a landowner that was in the middle between both that wouldn't sign one way or the other. So they wanted us to redo the reinvestment zone, and we elected not to do it. We said, you need to figure out how to sign that person. We've created your reinvestment zone. Well, they couldn't get it signed. And this was back before the, I think, the three thirteen agreement three twelve. So they went to the school districts to get a reinvestment zone done, which they don't have the authority to create a reinvestment zone. The only authority is between a city or a county, municipality or a county can create it. They did it. We didn't accept it. And then it kind of just went away, and I hadn't heard anymore on it. But I know we do have some solar that's in in the south. At one time, they were trying to do something like this for a battery deal up by Welder, but I hadn't heard, we hadn't never heard anymore on it, so.
Was there was there any restrictions on those solar farms? What county? Did we have any?
There was a gentleman here from Starling Solar that had a question.
Yeah, how does a gentleman have to answer his questions you have on the virtual one?
The office is wondering the maintenance and stuff, housekeeping around one, because we just, the man told me was driving up toward Galveston the other day. We seen one of these solar farms out there, and they're like a bunch of wrecked cars out there with trees growing from them, you know.
No, that should that should not be the case for two reasons. One, obviously, they don't produce if they've got a bunch of trees and stuff on them. For this project, we're actually trying to do agro voltaics whereby we'll have, we're not for sure. We still got a lot to do. Sheep they're grazing in our homes, the solar farms. Actually, it's cheaper for us and it's better for the land, you know, we help keep it keep it all well, because in thirty-four years, you pull this thing out and go back to your land again for farming.
You have just ice ore, you know.
Yeah, we don't we don't intend to have any ice ore or anything that we're making sure you don't want that. It's too too contingent of an item, especially in this area, to allow that to happen. Yeah. And this one, to be a little more specific, what this is, is just LCRAS needs to make their station bigger. And so we're helping. We have the batteries for it. It'll still be a separate component. We're looking at getting the solar started hopefully here within the next year. We believe we'll start in that. The battery storage may still be some time later.
So actually, this will just be what is stored. It won't be any solar panels up there?
The solar is different from this little three acres. This three acres is just the the substation currently is exist is built. It's going to add to that.
But this battery will take the storage from whatever solar produces.
Yeah, whenever the solar gets up and running, then the battery will be sitting right next to it. Here's the little, okay, so it doesn't necessarily charge from the solar panels. What it'll do is it takes power off the grid. When the power make, when the power's cheap, you charge the battery up. And when we have a high demand, hot temperatures, then we can sell when the power's high. And so it allows you to operate it now.
Do we all agree? Oh, my promotion would approve the substation precinct three council.
Motion in the second to approve the an exception to Gonzales County Subdivision for Towson. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Most curious? Seventeen, discuss with action approval of an exception to the Gonzales County Subdivision Rules, Precinct Three for Worley and Peña.
A father-in-law and his two son-in-laws purchased a large piece of property. They're splitting it up into tracks that are big enough that normally they wouldn't have to subdivide it. Although the father-in-law can keep one ten point zero zero six acre track, and the two son-in-laws are splitting roughly fifteen acre track into two seven point nine point eight acre tracks for themselves to live on. So out of the seven tracks or so, they're going to keep three of them in the end and then sell the other five tracks. But in this case, it's the one that the son-in-laws are going to live on. They're going to drop below ten acres, and when they split that fifteen acre track. So they're needing to get an exception so they put their houses on their real father-in-law.
Have they ever, this is, platted, it's already been?
It doesn't have to be platted. It's, this is going to be the father-in-law's track. This is going to be the two son-in-laws. They're going to sell the rest of these. They're all over ten acres. They've got, they just sent me this this word, and it's about fourteen pages of declarations and restrictive covenants and that sort of thing on the tracks that are.
How many acres in this?
About eighty acres, if I remember right.
And this is, would be how a father's going to get to his west end of the road right here?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean the subdivision restriction, I mean, I guess, what is the road funding right there?
It's about two hundred feet for the two of them, although these are over ten acres. And this is over ten acres right now. It's fifteen point some odd acres. So none of them need to be platted or necessarily follow all the subdivision rules. But they're going to split these, but they're going to drop below ten acres when they split this fifteen acre between the son-in-law.
And that's got back, that's where the houses are, right?
That's where the father-in-law's house is going to be, yes, sir. And there is some flood plain here. That's where they're making sure they all have room to build out of the front.
About the water.
There is a water line in front of that property. I don't know what size it is.
Is any open though?
I don't know. There's a lot of water on it. If there's not any open, you can't get water out of it. Yes, sir. I don't know.
Is that county water or?
That should be county water.
So they're subdividing it, it's just their ten acre tracks, so they don't have to.
Yeah, they don't have to have subdivision.
But then those are going to be under camp. See, and that's where, you know, when we do the subdivision, you have the exceptions like this, it usually somebody has a piece of property and they just give an acre to the kid, to the kid, but you know, it is being subdivided, you know what I'm saying? So it's a subdivision technically, just that if those are over ten acres and.
Is this the county road here?
It's ninety.
Ninety?
And this is supposedly seventy-four acre.
And they already own the entire property.
They own the entire property. That's when they bought it, I think their plan was for to split it out and sell lots. They decided to keep some of them out the creek. I think they're all going to live there when it's all said and done.
Were y'all comfortable with letting us cut this up and not even ten acres?
Well, that, yeah, that's what it boils down to is, you know, those don't have any plattings or books on there. They're going to fall into a subdivision.
Right. I guess another way to look at it, they could have, he could have just kept this a twenty-five acre piece of property. I guess another way to look at it, they could've, he could've just kept this a twenty-five acre piece of property and then come to us and say, "Hey, I wanna give property to my daughters and son-in-laws."
That would've...
And that would've been a family variance.
That would've been a family variance, wouldn't it? And that would've been different than like what college saying.
It's a subdivision.
Ten acres and you wind up at two and seven.
I'm gonna make a motion to move it table to children, look at it a little bit closer and see what we're gonna do.
All right, and a motion in a second to table to, uh, dig a little bit further into it. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Eighteen, discuss with action approval of an exception to the Gonzalez County subdivision rules precinct one, T P Land L T D, one point five acres.
Um, Mr. Lester is taking one point five acres out of his W two point zero seven acres. It's under that T P Land Limited name. And he would like to sell that to one of his employees and he did talk to the commissioner about that.
Yes, sir.
I think they sorted that out.
It's on the highway front there on one way. Harold Fredrick Park there.
Where's that at?
Uh, off of one oh eight, uh, just past the P Bill there on the left there on Fredrick Park.
On the same side as we were in there?
Uh, opposite side, yes, it's right across from Tom's property yard. Y'all good? I'm making a motion to take action approval of an exception to Gonzalez County subdivision rules precinct one, T and P Land L T D. Motion in a second, uh, for approval of an exception to Gonzalez County subdivision rules, precinct one for T P Land L T D. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Uh, nineteen, consider and take action on a bid for resale property suite, suite sixty-seven ninety-two parcel one three three seven four. Lot C, also known as lot three, and lot D, also known as lot four. Block eleven, third subdivision of the Lafayette Place addition, in addition to the, uh, to the town of Gonzalez, Gonzalez County, Texas, according to the map. Our plot thereof recorded in volume eighty-five, page four zero two and four zero three, deed records of Gonzalez County, Texas.
Good morning.
Morning.
We received a bid for this property that was originally placed on tax sale in December, uh, twenty twenty-four and has since been on our struck off list. Taxes due on this property are from two thousand and five through twenty twenty-four. Original adjudged value is twenty-one thousand nine thirty, current value is twenty-one thousand ninety. Post judgment taxes are three twenty-five fifty. Bid amount nine thousand three hundred. As this bid conforms to the county's policy of resale properties held in trust with the amount of bid being more than one half of the original opening bid, I recommend approval of said bid pending the approval of the other entities.
Over half.
Yeah.
I move we approve bid for resale property suite sixty-seven ninety-two as stated, as presented by the tax assessment.
Motion in a second to, uh, approve the bid for sixty-seven ninety-two parcel as stated. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Number twenty, uh, discuss with action, uh, amending votes cast for appraisal, uh, board district of the directors during the ten fourteen twenty twenty-five commissioners' court meeting as being that Jeff Harvey is not a nominee. And I think we did, uh, we, we just divided it between them all is what we did on the last one, you know, and just divided between the ones that are there, uh, excluding Jeff Harvey.
Well, there's...
Should have an updated...
There's an updated list, that's those nine.
Nine there, so five.
Right, so there's quite a few more than the original. The original we got...
Why do they, I don't understand that.
Currently, we, Gonzalez County has nine oh six, nine hundred and six votes. And it's like they added five, there's four additional names to the list. Took Jeff off. Now, when we vote on this slated record, they don't do incremental. It's all one slate at one time. It's not, I don't like it so much on that staggered terms. Evidence of all of these are just the entirety of the...
Come up at the same time?
All at the same time.
I think so. Yeah, we have nine hundred and six votes. I think.
Yes, the two, the two lists are kinda confused, or...
Yeah. How you can add more if you didn't? How you can add more after, after you've set it out the first time and then all of a sudden you decide to add more? So since we voted for Jeff Harvey, with the other entities debate, you know, I don't understand that, how you can... I believe the ones that highlighted that are on our bill are the ones we voted last time, right? With the exception of...
Well, see, this was, I think Jeff was on it, this was, they took him off and there were these, I mean, this last list has the four additional names on it.
Well, what was put in our books up between Brian Glass and Justin Fuhr and Shannon Smith? Shannon hadn't been on before, I think.
No, I think the new names, I know Bud was on it, I think Brianna, Brian, I think Sue Gobel and then Deppson. And I don't know if Robinson is a new one or not, I think Deppson's at the bottom also. New names on the list. You're saying which one?
Brian Glass, Justin Fuhr, Shannon Smith.
What about Sue Gobel?
Add Sue there.
You know, we don't wanna have too many people under all school related people.
Right.
They don't wanna catch on that because...
You're right, Josh.
There are already those big accident entities on there and you get so many people that are affiliated with schools and not saying they would, but still, you, that's the reason I was looking at this. If you wanna be able to...
Right.
And I know Sue's been on there, she's a retired teacher, Deanna Robinson, she's on the student board and shit.
What about Josh Gray? He's been on here. That's nine oh six, about about four. Two twenty-six.
Add Josh, you'd be five, you'd be...
The Robinson?
That's a dividend, add Josh, that'd be five, that'd be at one eighty, leave.
So you're talking about Brian Glass, Josh, Justin Fuhr, Shannon Smith?
Sue, Sue Gobel?
Be five, be five.
Kinda like the five.
Yeah, so you can do five, kinda give the mix a little bit on the new venture, but...
These are here votes for the decretions of the law. So then we're gonna list?
That's who we did the last one.
And I think if they, that would be, this was the corrected ballot of all the, all the, cause we got the, we, we, they took Jeff off and had that ballot and then... Then they added the corrected ballot of all the current nominees that they had. Don Watt, he's from Nixon, also he's the, code for the five, so there in Nixon, I know that. So Josh would be four or five. That's a breakout on any votes that I'm seeing. Brian Glass, Sue Gobel, Josh Gray, Justin Fuhr, Shannon Smith.
The motion? Motion in a second, uh, split the votes, say that again?
Brian Glass, Sue Gobel, Josh Gray, Justin Fuhr, Shannon Smith.
All right, uh, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss and possible action regarding Gonzalez County, uh, agreeing to file as an, uh, intervenor or amicus attorney in the pending litigation between Gonzalez County and the Underground, uh, Water Conservation District and the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority regarding the distinction between to deny additional pumping and export of prezo groundwater from the district. I know Eddie, I hadn't had a chance to talk to you since I've been back, but, I mean, as far as us being entitled to our opinion, uh, depending on whether we are sued, I mean, we could, we could actually just do that. We don't actually need to hire an attorney right now, right?
Well, what, what the agenda item is asking for is for Gonzalez County to enter pursuit as an intervener. Uh, what that means is, uh, an interested party injuring the lawsuit, now.
That way we'll be able to speak, is that what?
Yeah, and, and to have a say, you know, on what's decided, you know, in the lawsuit itself.
Gotcha.
One thing I will say though, uh, and I spoke to Tim tomorrow last week about it, uh, you know, you don't, you don't go to a, a foot doctor and you got a heart problem. And, and that's essentially the, the situation that, that my office would be in. Uh, I, I just do not believe that we have the staff or the, the knowledge to do this right. The, the law firms that they have been listed for this thing are heavy hitters and used to, uh, you know, make the lawsuits get around for decades. So that's, I, I'm not saying that Gonzalez County doesn't have an interest in it. What I'm saying is, um, to do it right, uh, to make sure the pleadings are wrapped properly and, and the research is done. If Gonzalez County decided to enter the defray, if you will, as an intervener, uh, my recommendation would be to, to farm that out. Because there's just, I mean, there's attorneys that are dedicated just, you know, on the water department. And that, that would be my concern if that's the way that the commissioner decided to do all that. You know, county issues, you know, day-to-day issues, no problem. Prosecution of, of any crime in Gonzalez County, no problem.
I got you, I got you. This is, this is something totally different.
Yes, this is kind of a, a different animal. And again, I'll say what I said when I, I started speaking is, I do believe that, you know, Gonzalez County has invested interests in the water issue.
No doubt.
No doubt. And my fear is, is that, you know, if, if my office were to enter that foray, it would not be that justice. And, and because of the time. So whatever commissioners wanna do, or whatever the court wants to do with regards to, you know, moving forward on that, uh, you know, commissioners wanted to kind of talk to some, some folks about this to kind of see what cost estimate would be and things like that. Cause, you know, this can go from, you know, a few thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars, uh, in, in representation and, and just, just so everybody on the court can make an informed decision. I, I don't think that's a bad idea, just to kind of get an idea if that's what y'all wanna do. But at the end of the day, uh, you know, I absolutely believe the county has invested interests in this.
I got you. And the thing about it is, we do have invested interests in it. And I think that our, our, uh, say as commissioners for this county holds a lot of bearing. And I think that also dealing with the Central Coeur d'Alves Office and some of the other senators and stuff, uh, I find it, uh, repulsive that, uh, one government, uh, agency is gonna sue another government agency. I mean, because we're talking about taxpayer money here, whichever way we go. And, uh, probably out of line saying what I'm saying, but I just, I, I think it's ridiculous. But I think as Gonzalez County, this is our county, this is our water, this is our people, this is the people that we represent, and I think we need to pursue, uh, just as, as Eddie says. That's my opinion.
So you're saying that if we get involved, just we need to hire our own attorney that is affiliated with this? Or should we do like we do with like, uh, DeWitt County and those when we do with the stuff in Austin?
That's a thought, I mean, to combine the other counties, but...
Participate with their attorneys.
Right now, the suit is just through Gonzalez County, uh, underground water, which is not actually affiliated with us to just have our name, so.
But I was wondering if we could...
We can look into it, but we probably is...
We do it on Austin, their economy kind of thing. No, Austin's on their cost base.
We might just need to go ahead and pass this and then we can look into it and get that information and then we can prevent it. That I, I would suggest.
Well, I'm making a motion to move through.
The question, what is it exactly, exactly is to ask if we agreed to file as an intervenor?
That's what the agenda item says, uh, again, that would require legal. So, uh, you know, if, if the court wanted to kind of explore that, just to see the cost, what's all associated with it, if it could be a, a cost share agreement with existing attorneys. On the case, there's, there's different variables that, that you could enter into, but right now we just feel...
I wanna turn to the, the players hand that guy there, that means agree.
So we definitely support it, we just wanna basically, we would wanna explore our options at this point.
That makes sense. Now, motion?
Is there a motion?
Motion in a second to, uh, explore our options and to get a little bit of information on the litigation or whatever we need, uh, for the, uh, Guadalupe Blanco Authority and Gonzalez, and Gonzalez County on the intervention, so. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Number twenty-seven, discuss with possible action on creation of a part-time sergeant investigator for the county attorney's office to be fully funded by Senate Bill twenty-two. to be fully funded by Senate Bill twenty-two, resources as previously approved in the budget workshop.
Uh, I asked for this to be put on, I, I didn't speak to, uh, Shawna, uh, I mean, I, I guess everything is set up for this based on what was approved in budget workshop, uh, I just wanted transparency with the court, uh, before anybody's brought on as a, on a part-time basis, and it would be, uh, a hundred percent, uh, funded through SB twenty-two. Uh, it's a, it's a part-time position, and, and I spoke to, to Shawna about it, uh, based on what's there, uh, max amount of hours and hourly rate, all that has been already calculated and approved in the budget. Uh, but I wanted this put on as, you know, as far as the creation of the position, uh, there at my office.
You're good?
I move we approve the creation of a part-time sergeant investigator for the county attorney's office to be fully funded by SB twenty-two resources as previously approved in the budget workshop.
Motion is second, uh, to creation of the part-time sergeant investigator, investigator for Gonzales County Attorney's Office funded by SB twenty-two. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries twenty-three, discuss, uh, slash possible action on reclassifying the title of the full-time investigator with the Gonzales County, uh, Attorney's Office to chief investigator with no other changes other than title.
So the reason I put this on is now we're gonna have, you know, in this for, uh, we're gonna have another investigator, part-time investigator, so, uh, just to establish shade of man, uh, what we're asking for is that, you know, investigator probably be your chief investigator and then as previously approved in twenty-two, uh, the part-time investigator being sergeant investigator. So that's, that's all we're asking, nothing's changing, pay is not changing, everything stays the same, it's just the title change based on the fact that we have a moment.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
If we didn't approve this, since we, we shouldn't have turned around, I guess, if we didn't approve him as the chief investigator, I mean, the sergeant investigator would be over him?
Well, no, because he would be, he would be a part-time, at that point, it would default as an assistant investigator.
We'd be equal, I guess, if you wanted to do, to flip the coin, this one's full-time, this is part-time, so this one has more, I don't know.
It would be, because he's sergeant.
They're both sergeant.
Anyway, I'm sorry, I just didn't, I, I just had to mention it, it was an ordering issue.
I move to approve item twenty-three, as long as it's done.
Motion is second to approve item twenty-three, is listed, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries, commissioner, all in favor?
Get out of here.
I got to go.
Get down.
I gotta go to the dark end.